Thank you. All right, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple of changes to our agenda, and so I want to point those out. We will be striking the recognition time for tonight, and we'll hold that next month. We also will be striking the Internet E-Rate Proposal under Financial Report. Kay sent an email about that today, so we'll come back to that at our next meeting. So we'll be striking those two, and then we will be adding the Ref Agreement under New Business. So I'll make the motion, just since I have it right in front of me.
I will approve the agenda with the following amendments: Striking Dean Recognition for 1920 retirees, striking under F Internet E-Rate Proposals, and adding Ref Agreement under New Business. Is there a second?
Second.
And in the second vote, all those in favor, please say aye, and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Agenda approved, seven zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Murphy and Cindy Crick to discuss negotiation items for the 2021 academic year facilitator reception for the prayer review negotiations under format, and the opening will resume in the PAC at 6:45 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Susan has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye, and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion heard, seven zero. Executive session.
Thank you.
And the opening meeting will return in the BAC. Uh, to give it to the people. Is there a second?
Second.
Twenty seconds, all those in favor, please say aye on measure eight.
Aye.
Aye, condition three seventy-one.
May I have my floor for the percentage agenda, please?
So.
Thank you Phil. And Tony has seconded. All those in favor of approving the percentage agenda as presented, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Mission Curry is seven zero. As previously noted, we are skipping recognition tonight. And now for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? If only so. And just want to check one more time. I didn't receive any public comment by the board. Okay. So no electronic public comment. Okay, so moving on to financial report. Cost of living resolution. Cindy Fret.
We have the opportunity to discuss a cost of living mill levy. That essentially increases our general fund weighting. It would bring in about, based on this year's calculations, it would run in about eighty thousand dollars in the district. And of course we can, we do have some flexibility, even though it would add, would add less than one mil, more like point eight mils. To our mill levies. We do still have some control with our wanted interest to help our total mill levy remain the same. If the board would like to assess this mill, we would need to do a resolution. And publish in the paper, subject to protest petition. Which we could do before budget season this year. So it is calculated, it is a calculation that you might not hear very often. It's based on the set value of our funds in our district. And you could say by coverage, a lot of districts don't qualify for this. But we do, and so we're now at at least thirty one percent of the other requirement to qualify to assess this mill. We are eligible to do so. Question?
Yeah, I've got a question Cindy. I don't know whether my mic is working. So I'll just speak.
I don't know whether my mic before this ought to speak really loudly. Who authorized this authority for us? What did this come from? Is it from the county? Is it from the state?
This is a state, just part of the state budget. Like, even though they always talk about the different levels that we assess, and their calculations, this is a part of the K S D budget.
Okay.
If we approve the resolution to make ourselves eligible for it, that doesn't mean that we then end up having, we don't make the decision about whether we actually utilize it until later.
That's correct.
Okay. The company that uses it, the company, the state, the calculation, let us know how much that will be in for next year. And then we will have the opportunity to run it or not. Okay, so I just want the board members to be clear that a decision about that tonight doesn't mean, okay, if it's done, it goes in. It just means this is the decision we would have to make to pursue eligibility, and then we would ultimately decide.
If we get to that time and we don't have that resolution, then we don't have an option.
Is that something, why is it being a year to year kind of thing? Or is it like a one-time decision now we're all?
I will, this one does not have a word in it to make it effective for the future, so I'll leave as a year to year resolution.
Does it not, sure we qualify every single year? We do some years, but not every year that we qualify for.
Yeah, we.
It doesn't even show up as an option until we do that thirty-one percent L E. So it's just the last couple of years we've never seen it as an option.
But yes, it would be possible that in the future we would have a call out.
Does it have any other questions about that?
You mentioned a little bit about the, we have some flexibility with the bond.
Yeah.
Bond and interest. So what you're saying is we would reduce the bond and interest and raise this so that it doesn't change over, that doesn't change the actual total mills.
We are positioned this year specifically to make the total state class even be added.
If you think you might be interested in doing this, like a re-approval solution, then we could make a motion to approve if you choose to. Okay, here is all of the provisionation of USC three forty-eight. Shall be authorized to levy a tax amount not to exceed the amount necessary to finance a cost attributable directly to the assignment of cost of living weight to the enrollment of the school district. The other law of tax operating by this resolution may be levy, nonetheless, a protest petition in opposition to the same. Not signed by less than five percent of the home by the elected school district is filled with the county election officer for the home county of the school district within thirty days after the publication of this resolution. If a petition is filed, the county election officer shall submit a question of whether the tax of a tax, sorry, levy, such a tax shall be authorized and awarded with the provisions of this resolution to the elected students of the school district at the next general election of this district. As specified by the provisionation of this district.
So moved. Is there a second? Carrie has seconded. So all those in favor of publishing or moving forward with the resolution, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries seven zero. Is there a signature on that besides the mole quote?
There's no quote.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything with that at the end. Okay. Yes, thank you. Okay, administrative reports. K S D policy update.
We got a small packet of policy updates from the Kansas Association of School Boards. We've got a small packet of policy updates from the Kansas Association of School Boards. I reviewed those and provided recommendations on each one of those. A lot of them are just warning changes, warning updates, a few things like that. Usually there's more, but it was kind of a short list this time. The number of things have to come in things and health. And so they were thinking of changing policies to help the board say, yes, we have authority to do that because of, for health reasons, we can do that. Any questions about any policies or my recommendations on any of them? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the recommendations or as the recommendations were made for those board policies.
Is there a second? Okay, Carrie has moved, and Tony has seconded that we approve the K S D policy updates as recommended. All those in favor of approving those updates, please say aye and raise your right hand. Any opposed? Seven zero, motion approved. Okay, related to that, item number two is update on policy G A U.
Yes, G A U has to do with our health insurance benefits for employees, and it just needs to be updated. Published from the event quite a while ago, but we caught it and felt like, let's get it to the board and get it updated. It's just simply raising that amount that we're paying each month for health insurance or any single in the board. Yes.
So we're already paying, is this, is this according to what the policy matched?
That's correct, we're already paying that amount. It's just to get it updated up to the beginning of the year.
Any other questions about G A U? Doesn't change what we do, it just matches. There a motion to approve the policy update for G A U?
I remember that we approved those changes, okay, updates for G A U.
Thank you, Tony. Is there, Chris has seconded. All right, Tony moved and Chris seconded to approve the update for policy G A U. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Number three, we are at the educational program highlight portion of our meeting. Dr. Craig here, hello.
Okay, thanks. Well, next Thursday is the ten day anniversary of digital learning day. And that's a world by day, celebrating and showcasing the innovations and the culture of how we use the technology. And I had a couple of things on the agenda tonight with the internet and then also with the virtual schools, every kind of technology related. Also, as you know, since last March, we've all been using technology so much, or lives have been enhanced personally and professionally by digital devices. So we thought that February was the perfect moment to showcase digital learning in USC three forty-eight. So with that, Drew Eisen is our technology integration specialist, and he is going to share some technology data and information with you.
Hi. Hi. If you have a device, that'll be cool. If you don't have or need a device, let me know. Because we want to probably see grants as I talked about.
I don't know, you can ask.
I know. Okay. You can go to joinpd.com, joinpd.com.
I'm not fair to that, is that right?
You should ask for a code.
I just didn't get me to join that.
So this work here, and if you'd like to watch any of those, we join the slides of the group, perhaps get it this way. The code you're looking for is C D P V H T.
Say that again.
C D P V H T. It provides a mnemonic for you that says confused, drowned, perfectly vacated, hilarious, trumps. Which of course is what we're paying you for.
Did I click on how?
Sure, that's where you see that.
To confuse it, it's not here.
So this is a tool pair that many of our teachers are starting to use more and more. To engage their students as they're going through things in class or remotely. I use this over the summer with the primary-based learning course we offer for teachers as a way to do this kind of case criticism. So you can choose instructor-based or student-based. I can embed different format of questions and things in the process that goes through here. So at some point, you'll see a box pop up, like text box. So if you have a question or comment you would like to, you know, put it back to me, you can type it in there. And you can just send it back my way, and then I can address those, or I can bring them up organically in a perfect world, but. We'll see how that goes. Or if there's a multiple choice question, so maybe you can respond that way, and I can pull the audience in that way. Okay, so in lieu of dropping a screen down the block in half of your likely bases from the live stream, and making everyone, you know, move, that this would be a way for you to see what I'm talking about, and I'm talking about. Okay, so you might see some pictures on there. Yours might, might also depending on whatever device you have, I noticed that today. It does a little emoji for a student's face, a little emoji for a teacher's face, and an adult. So if you see that on the graph, that is talking about that group of people, where that data came from. What you're gonna see is graphs from our modern learning survey we do through bright lights. This year was the first time we polled parents, and we also have some parent data for the first time this year. It has changed a little bit, so there are certain things you'll see that we can compare directly from the last three or four years. There are certain things that are kind of new information for us. So this first one is, this is something we figured out about digital citizenship and online Z D. So with our students being online more often, right? Especially this year, digital citizenship is an important part of this, right? Do they know how to get around on the internet? Do they know how to write, hold the same passwords? Do they know how to deal with several languages and stuff like that? You'll see this pop up in a couple of different places, so I include this graph first. Our students are on top, our teachers' responses are on bottom. And you can see that we still have room for growth in this area for ways that we can implement this. The state just adopted new computer science standards, which now include digital citizenship across the K twelve curriculum. And that came over the summer. So that's a new thing for us. I've worked with Dr. Neil Way at the primary center to come up with kind of a scope and sequence for those computer science standards for the K twelve, the K twenty. It was in the works before all of this started with the intermediate center, so this will kind of seed that process up. We have some lessons that we created for the primary roll out here at the junior high school, where it's also a case where we can have that, start maybe part of our similar classes where we're, I think, class we did in eighth grade, social studies, seventh grade, it was in E L A, and so each grade level had a different teacher who went through this with the teacher for the students. So you can see that teachers have a little bit less frequent time that they're showing this, and the students have a little bit more frequent that they're going through this. That's because one teacher might be covering it for a whole grade level. And Dr. Here and I, I think that this could be a place to implement this kind of in our whole of our classes, that's a good idea. This is what teachers are saying about what they're using in class now. So you can see that previously, our learning management systems, you know, had that campus at the high school. But in the last year, they've gotten on more Google classroom at the junior high school, and now at the intermediate center, all the way through. And so the number of people using those learning management systems daily has increased from about fifteen percent in twenty nineteen. And you can see now that that number is closer to forty percent are using these things daily with their students, right? We don't have data because we didn't do a collection last year in the spring to get the twenty twenty data, but from twenty nineteen into this year, we saw a huge jump in that. We see a decrease in the non-digital resources being used. Huge increase went from about zero percent video conferencing app decisions to this, two years ago, to that number being now much more frequently than that, especially for our remote students. And then the content and creation websites and apps were another place, presenting a lot more students getting involved in those things. The teachers are instead of using creativity apps once per price a month, now it's closer to once per price a week. Getting their students to do more creation of things that are possible. Access and support, I thought this was interesting, and it had been a little bit surprising when we looked at the access that our families have at home, okay? I knew that we had made a lot of really good efforts to get connection for people. But our students and parents self-reported about three percent of the district that responded to the survey. They did not have internet access at home. I expected that number to be higher still. And I was actually pleasantly surprised to see that we had gotten that much out of the community to help them with that. Because if you look at the same question from two years ago, we were at about eleven percent no connection for students and parents. And the percentage of people saying that they have internet access that they're actually happy with as opposed to about seventy-five percent. So not only like I have internet access, but I'm not worried about the quality of my internet access today. And that was a pleasant surprise for us. We also have seen in the last couple of years increases in the perception of the quality of the devices that we're putting out in the district. The internet speeds have stayed about consistent, and the ability for us to then deal with those problems through our support system has also increased, especially with students. And part of that is because we've started to make available teachers a form for students to directly kind of connect with the tech department to get support for things. They don't have to like catch somebody as they walk through the hallway for everything. Right, so that's another thing that I found that's actually pretty interesting, and a positive change for our district. Online collaboration, this is the part that it's both positive to me and also a place for a huge growth for us still here. The board has tasked us as a school district for emphasizing twenty-first century skills, right? Those four Cs of creativity, communication, critical thinking, and collaboration. Things that are applicable everywhere, right? No matter your, your college, your career choices, those are going to be things that will help you be successful over time. And so in the last two years, if you were to look at how this has changed. And just start with the collaboration using documents, just Google Docs, right? You're thinking about that right there. That number, now you're talking about, oh, forty percent of teachers are using that at least once a week in their classroom. And if you were to look at that two years ago, that number was at fifteen percent, right? Collaborating with classmates, and that number is close to twenty percent now. Before, we were asking our students to collaborate with their digital resources, closer to nine percent of teachers would say that weekly. And it's not the people that are, kind of, we're not seeing any changes in the middle. What we're seeing is people moving from that never category, and it's kind of shifting over. So if you never did it before, you might kind of have a monthly installation to this. And if you were monthly, maybe now you're doing it weekly. If you were weekly, now you might be doing it daily. And that to me shows that our teachers are starting to make the shift as we need to, to connect with our students and to get them to collaborate, because if we can't get everybody cuddled around the lab station, doing a science lab for safety purposes, we can still have them collaborating, right? We can still have them doing things together and building that positive culture in our classroom, and also having the balance of ideas off each other. As far as collaborating with experts, so our goal As far as collaborating with experts, so if our goal is to implement more project-based learning, that's a place that I want to see that grow in the next few years. So you can see the teachers there, um, close to seventy percent of them say that they never ask their students to collaborate online with experts. And the teachers that are doing this are producing things like Skype as scientists, we could bring them in a project. And so probably a teacher's never going to have a student doing this daily. But we also think that it should also never be never, right? We should get out of that category, so now that we're doing projects, let's bring in experts. And so you might have that once or twice a month, you bring an expert into your classroom, either online or in person. But hopefully we got the stuff to see that never disappear, right? It is better than it was before, but as you can see, there's plenty of room for growth in that category still for teachers. Students are seeing more of that because again, they see more teachers during the day for the most part, so they may not see an expert in their social studies class every day, but if they see one in culinary arts and they see one in social studies, they see somebody in math. Their elementary teacher might do a Skype scientist and bring a scientist in to talk about, you know, dolphins or weather or whatever they're talking about in class. And so that is an interesting piece of that too. Uh, last one here is professional development. Dr. Herr and I have a soft spot for this question every year that it's on there because it helps us get a better idea for how we can serve the teachers in the district and give them what they feel they need to be successful. And I went ahead and kind of highlighted the things that are related directly to twenty-first century skills uh, in that first kind of block of of categories there. Uh, there are some other things that would apply there, but there was less interest in those. Uh, you can see virtual instruction, uh, this year was very popular. Uh, it had almost no responses in twenty nineteen as people being interested in that. And now is the most popular thing that people are interested in. And this was earlier in the semester, right, when they took the survey, October, November. Uh, when we were still kind of in that war and dread kind of teeter totter, we were not quite sure what was gonna happen. And so that's really was was fresh in teachers' minds then. But then those next few are all really powerful ways for us to engage students, right? When they're learning, how can we make better use of our technology? Student need for the technology, how can we make better use of the technology, right? Our board, uh, I don't think I've seen it on the turn here, has done a really great job providing our teachers with stuff that we do use for our students. iPads with lab supplies, with these things, and now we need to use them, we need to really do a great job with these things. Right, and all of these are related to those four Cs. Uh, the one thing that I was kind of interested in here, knowing what I know about the standard shifting, right? Is that digital citizenship is, right? So uh, a question that I have, right, if I see this, like what do you notice, what do you wonder? A question I wonder is, uh, is that number the lowest because they, as teachers don't feel, they may need more training on that, they feel adequately prepared? Or is it because they don't know that there is an expectation coming in the next couple of years uh, from the state at least, that our students are proficient in this by the time they leave our schools? Alright, so uh, those types of things, the good thing about this is it can be embedded into everything. Right, as you're talking about research skills, right, as you're developing a project in your ELA class, you can talk about the bi meeting resources, right? Is this a good resource to use? As you're dealing with um, a socialized project, or you're talking about relationships and dynamics and cultures, right? You can talk about, you know, how you talk to people online, how you interact with these people and that could be a good cross report there. So uh, it is a thing that might be the lowest now, but I feel that that going forward will be something really more important. Especially with social, emotional learning in the time and all those things. What questions, uh, or comments do you have that I can address for you?
I'm just, I'm a little curious if there was any, I didn't even turn it on, I pretended, I was taking it, I'm sorry.
It's fine.
I'm curious about if they gave you any guidance on how we know, how are they going to assess or measure whether they are uh, solid digital citizens?
I'm talking about state of Kansas.
Huh, yeah, yeah, how are we gonna know?
That's a great question. That part is underdeveloped at the time. Um, I imagine it will be similar to um, to something where it's just like, we, we're stating that we have covered this, right? This is part of our process, uh, and so maybe it's a piece of thing and it's a checkbox and say, okay, is this how we're already seeing things, I don't know. I was not like a computer science assessment, you know, like you're not gonna have, you're gonna do like the socializing thing where they have a project, so they have to be directly ordered, you know, not in the way with an actual pencil or online test. That's not in the plans at this one way. But it is nice just to have guidance, like this is what we expect the kids and students to know and do with the technology going forward. Uh, Tyler, we're, uh, some teachers have actually long been committed to develop those standards. So if you have more interest, we'd be a great person to talk to. Not to put something else on.
Does anyone else have questions?
Okay, thank you very much, beautiful.
Thank you.
Uh, this is just uh, highlighting these things, um, and in the past, board members have had access to fully this. Uh, so if you would, uh, like to see the, uh, what is it, seventy-five questions that we got, they did work. I'm glad they provide you with all that access to all of those graphs. I mean, we could talk about data for hours and hours.
I don't like that.
We should still access, uh, you were on the board when we first started this, it was like seventeen, eighteen?
Oh, yeah.
You should, you're, you're on the board, I'll push it back out to you.
Perfect.
And me, push mine back out to you. Is this a paid for, is join PD, PD, do we pay for that service for you?
Uh, we can pay for it and get access to more formative style questions. But what you're seeing is the free version, uh, and so that's what most of our teachers use.
Cool.
Yeah. Whenever possible, I try to model the free version.
Well, thank you, because it really has been a noticeable positive team effort. I know a lot of these things that we're doing have been um, created by necessity, which there's a quote about that being the mother of invention. But you guys have worked together in a way that, that is getting devices at the door ready to go, but then also teachers being able to use them. It covered a lot of ground in a really short amount of time. Uh, so please know that that does not go unnoticed, so thank you for that and thank you for the presentation. Um, alright, with that, we will go ahead and move forward to the next item, which is virtual program for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yes, um, we, I had sent some information to the board in the time about the virtual program. Uh, a couple things to understand here. First off, Kansas Department of Education uh, has been informing districts now that a remote-only choice that we've been doing this past year will not be a choice next year, as it's been. So with that in mind, they have been explaining to us that if we want to be in that business, it will have to be a virtual school, not a virtual program. For a remote-only program, it will have to be a virtual school. A virtual school is a whole lot of hurdles to jump through to qualify for that, to have a virtual school. We have had a virtual program in the past that kind of went through Green Bush and it was mainly pre recovery and we got two or three kids each year would get on there to do some of the work if it wasn't working. Um, so that's what we've had in the past. This year, of course, we jumped in and they allowed remote-only, which is what we did with the cellus this year. So with that, Jenna and I looked at a lot of different things on this and what we might consider. I believe a hundred percent that if we're not in some sort of virtual business of some kind, we're going to lose students and families other places uh, that want to continue with a virtual, a virtual program of some kind. So with that, uh, after looking at a lot of different programs, uh, we are recommending that we go with Green Bush Virtual School. Here's the thing. One, they've already jumped through all the hoops, so they know how it works. They hire all the instructors, so we're not in the business of hiring instructors to do the virtual learning. They use some very accepted and vetted programs, Edunity and the Florida, Florida Virtual Learning Service for their programs, uh, so they're very good programs. Um, and we believe that that would be the program for us to go with. Here's the hook, because they're hiring the instructors and they have to pay for them, there is a cost to the service. It would be thirty-five hundred dollars a student for students to go there. For each virtual student that we have in the district, we give five thousand dollars worth of funding. So thirty-five hundred would go to this, to this uh, virtual school. With that, we then provide a Chromebook. Uh, if we don't provide a Chromebook and Green Bush provides a Chromebook, it's four thousand dollars a student. Well, we believe we can supply students with Chromebooks for way less than five hundred dollars. So it makes financial sense for us to come up with Chromebooks, so that they can, they can take the coursework home. Uh, the thing that we don't know is how many students will want that option next fall. With, with no guess there, it can be really expensive and may not be very expensive. Uh, if we're all back to schooling in, I don't know how many people will choose that option to go there. Uh, but we're recommending, the problem is we're at a deadline. Actually, the deadline was last Friday. They gave me an extension because I said I need to talk to my board and see where they're at. But they gave me an extension and this deadline is set by the state of Kansas. We had to let them know that we were wanting to do one or the other. We sent in an application uh, last week. Um, Dr. Craig Herr pushed the button while we were setting it, so we, we put our application in uh, so that we had something and he is waiting for me to tell him we're gonna try and set our own up or we're going to go through Green Bush. My feeling is, uh, again, I would recommend that we go through Green Bush. If we try to do our own, we have to jump through every hurdle that Green Bush has had to do and any approved virtual school has to go through it in order to have one. And if we can't meet those requirements, we don't have one, period. And then it's too late to go through Green Bush. So we're kind of at a deadline here. We've kind of gotta make a decision and we don't have much time. So I am recommending, along with Dr. Craig Herr, uh, that we believe that our best bet for a virtual school this year is to go through Green Bush, a virtual school. Questions?
Yeah, I don't know if my mic works, I'll try it. Uh, is it working? No, okay. Uh, so one question I have, I know in the past we've had the remote option. There was a requirement to be in school, brick and mortar for like a, for one class a day for athletics. How does that then with a virtual school, did it affect athletics?
Great question, I should have covered that. Uh, the, the thing that they want us, uh, a couple things, two things I want to point out. They were very clear to us that their program does not meet NCAA requirements. So if I'm an athlete that thinks I'm gonna go to NCAA, uh, I should not go into this program. If I want to do this program and still participate in Baldwin High School or Junior High Athletics, I have to take at least one class in the brick and mortar. Green Bush knows that, they work with us, they'll come up with a pro rated thing and they could take a class in the brick and mortar building and then take the rest of it virtual.
And that would make them NCAA qualified?
Not NCAA qualified, it would make them PNC high school.
Okay, so, and so by that, and so for, just so I'm clear then, not because I'm planning on playing NCAA or in school, but um, so if you did the Green Bush option, came to school for your hour a day, played volleyball, and you were really good, you wouldn't be able to go to K-State and play volleyball?
You would not.
You'd have to go to JuCo, kind of a JuCo off.
You could go to JuCo, you could go to Baker, you could go to anyone that isn't an NCAA. If I'm an NCAA fan and I have that kind of talent, I need to be in the school building.
Okay, but it doesn't, but for, and it's, I'm assuming that's just athletics thing, cause it, it doesn't hurt you like if you just wanna go to an NCAA, if it's an NCAA school, it's not like they won't be like, oh, you're at the Green Bush.
No, you can go to the Green Bush virtual program, it will pay you, they say, you could go to the school, sure. It's only an athletics and it's athletic rules.
So like, so in the situation of somebody went there, they're, if they did Green Bush their freshman year, but were in brick and mortar their sophomore, junior, senior year, you know, and they, you know, they didn't play sports, but then they were like, they're really good. Does that one year, then they say, sorry, you can't come if you do any Green Bush? Or is it like, if you do your last year or?
Phil, that's a great question.
Why I asked that?
Uh, yeah, uh, no, I don't have a great answer for you on that. I don't know if one year trips you up because I know to meet, but that's reach requirements. Uh, NCAA, Brad, do you have an answer on that?
I think the answer would be because you're, you're gonna have to go through the NCAA clearinghouse and, and you're not going to get cleared even if you do one year. So let's say you take algebra, or you take some course through Green Bush that isn't NCAA clearinghouse certified, you're not gonna get through, that's the way that I understand it.
So I think that, I mean, that should be pretty, that, that should be a pretty big disclaimer. Yeah, yeah, that should be a pretty big disclaimer then, because you hate to have somebody who's coming through, do that and then, you know, be a stud volleyball player and now all of a sudden, you know, their, their plans are dashed because they did.
Well, and the, the, the option at that point is go to a junior college for a year, you can make your academics there, do a good job, you can transfer into an NCAA school. Right, so yeah, you're right. So they, uh, so there's that option, but yes, Phil, you're right. We have to make students very clear, here's what happens if you choose this option.
The education uniform is the bar approved in the NCAA clearinghouse, but Green Bush has modified the courses to fit in the standards. So that's where they don't approve, they have to run that through. But when we're doing it on our own, we also have to send those courses through the clearinghouse we have approved. So Green Bush is in the same position that any of us from being that.
Right, sure, sure. Well, that, that ties exactly into my next question. Uh, you know, if, if Green Bush already has this all laid out and it costs us thirty-five hundred dollars for a student to go there, not saying we should, but if we came up with our own virtual program, does the state still give us that thirty-five, or the five thousand per student?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that potentially then could be, you would, you would be net positive cash flow.
For if we could get to the point where we go on our own, of course, that's hiring our own teachers, that's, it's this whole other thing. that's, it's this whole other thing I'm going, then, yes, we, we would collect the whole five thousand dollars, but then we're also paying the, we're, we're paying the instructors.
Now, and is there, I mean, is there, is the, is there a good enough understanding of, of Green Bush and what they have? And that you would have a go by, kind of a cheat sheet, you know, that you could use to set up your own? You could say, oh, well, they do this, this, and this, and this, so look, this is what we need to do. So they've done a lot of the legwork and, and you know, you're not having to reinvent the wheel, you're just looking at a picture of a wheel, a building wheel, as opposed to kind of coming up from scratch.
Right, and most certainly, uh, Don Gross, who is the manager of the program, uh, most certainly said, if you decide to get to that point, we would try to help you.
Yeah.
Um, but, and the feeling is, I mean, to do the, I just don't feel, I don't think we can get it together for next year.
Yeah, oh yeah, I know.
But, and I know that's not where you go, but I, could we get there? Yeah, I think we can, I think we could get there, it's just a matter of getting it set up right, putting all the things together, the curriculum. We could, we could contract through Edgenuity, the same ones they would let us contract to them to provide the curriculum. And then it's just providing the teachers and the setup that you've got to have and the services around the program.
I mean, to me, I would, I would rather see that money, you know, I mean, and I'm assuming that, that with, with, I mean, the Green Bush, the teachers, like, are they there in Florida or wherever else, so they're not.
Uh, they're, they're in the state of Kansas.
I mean, I would like to see us, if that is a situation where that money is staying here in, in Baldwin, you know, and you're keeping, you're keeping that, so at, at least as a long-term goal, if we're going to do a long-term virtual school up, my thought would be, I would like to see us put together our own rather than use Green Bush long-term, not certainly in the short term, it sounds like that's probably the best option.
Right.
I think one of the things too that I was interested in, the Green Bush piece of that is, if we did our, um, we've all been known, we have, going into next year, how many kids could be in everything, we wouldn't say at a minimum, we'd do one elementary teacher, one secondary teacher, and then we'd be contacted for all more kids, we can up to five, three, with the kids. Green Bush doing that, they take time for doing the best for remote learning, they have a positive teacher for every secondary subject. So like what we're doing with remote, if kids have trouble with math, they have a math teacher that they go to. If they have trouble with social studies, there's a social studies teacher. So if we're doing it with remote, that's what we're going to be able to do because they're doing a larger scale, so they can help that. We're going to show you that, that's what we want to grow into, to really scale and serve our students.
You think we pass the middle of anything? That's all the questions I have.
All right, and anybody else?
Yes, we're going to have a minimum, like if we don't have two students, two, we would.
Yes, that would be fine. Uh, they will always work with us on how many we want to put in there, if we end up with fifty or if we end up with this, one or two. They will take whatever, they are going to be working with about sixty to seventy school districts. So numbers are not unique either. Yeah. Uh, yes, right. There is one stipulation on it. You cannot, the students into the program, they'll be Baldwin students, they'll end up with a Baldwin diploma, but they have to live in our district. We can't do, a kid that lives in Lawrence can't come here and be in the Green Bush uh virtual school. They don't want competition, we're not competing with other districts. So could that trip up a kid that's been coming here from Ottawa or Lawrence for all this time and says, I would like to do the virtual school, we could meet that for them. Who would have many kids, I doubt it, who would have many kids. But we could not do that because they'd say, you'd have to roll the odds for virtual school.
Do we know approximately how many kids we have that are out of district transfers, that are in all, all schools already?
Out of district transfers?
Yeah.
Oh boy, um.
Like a brush up?
Um, maybe. Is it, is it in here? That's a rough guess.
And, and some are sending that out to the college, some are sending that out to the university.
So that's eighty that live outside of, of the boundaries of our school district that still come to Baldwin?
Yes. Yeah, we, we have, we have quite a few, we have more that come in. It is, it is a good thing, it's a good thing for funding, it's a good thing, uh, to a, to a point, it's a good thing. Uh, this year, that was a little rough, we turned a lot of people down that we would normally probably take, simply because we were trying to keep our class sizes down. Uh, so we, we turned a lot away this year that we would normally take.
One more question we do, uh, for the, uh, Green Bush virtual school option, uh, would parents, did, did, did this year, were they in like a semester to move away? Or is it not a full semester?
So yes, if they, you didn't, okay, a couple other telling things here that will help with your question. A student could start in the virtual school in the fall, and as long as they transfer back by September twentieth account date, as long as they transfer back, Green Bush would not charge them for it. So that gave me two or three weeks to find out, oh, this had worked for me, they could come back. Uh, they, um, so we, we've got a little leeway there, they also can go to the semester. Uh, this will also still work for credit recovery. So it will cost, I don't know, a hundred dollars, a hundred fifty dollars per course for a kid that says, okay, I blew geometry, I need to retake it, uh, I need to pay for it. The kid just makes work themselves and they can take it to the virtual school.
Is half an option? Like, did you go, did a high school student go half remote, half in person, like if there's an AB schedule?
I, I think so. I, I think so, I think he said we would just pro rate what that is. Uh, you know, you pay for half and they're here half the time, yeah. I think it could have worked, uh, I guess the question that will cross that bridge sometime is, do we want to let students do that? Most certainly, I think we want to let the ones who want to be in activities come in and take their one class that the activity association requires, that they do or they're not eligible.
The one thing that we talked to KSCD, they said if you're doing that, then they visit for the funding, they're not charging for it, they're not charging for the virtual, and so the funding can probably drop scale to about a five thousand per student, so much for brick and mortar and some of the students for the virtual. So that's probably one decision in the fall, how that happens.
It may not work.
Yeah, no, I guess it's very hard.
And the other piece of Green Bush talking about is, it looks like they had a very well thought out evaluation process, so they need to come far and get the students in their pathway and really decide if virtual school, if it match for the student or not. And they, we see this situation, or it's been a little bit for some more students, and some are talking about the best successful way to get your athletics fixed, so they would help, help us go through that counseling process with students and families before they get into that situation.
Yeah, and, and to me, this seems like a really good option versus stepping to this phase two point O of a virtual school, without having to go full dive deep into the deep end here with how it all worked out. And if we get, send in our kids who are in there to do this next year, we could have a much better math on our side to justify.
This is probably going to be a dumb question, but in terms of thinking what our short-term decision is versus long-term goals, um, the infrastructure, the, the digital infrastructure that we would need to think about developing, um, is that something that Capitol LA can be used for?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, in order to cover those, those uh Chromebooks, we would just, we'd have to find out, we'd have to find out if it's a good, uh, what term we would give those order.
Because it's more the facility, it's just a digital facility, so I just, I wanted to ask them about that, okay. Um, do you need a motion to approve going with Green Bush for this coming year?
That would be good, if it's more disputed, this is the motion we'll go with.
Okay, so, and then it sounds like there seems to be some appetite for looking at long-term strategies as well, not that we want to do that tonight, but how could we, um, what would be a good, maybe, if we could ask you to think about, what would be, what would it look like to bring this back to the table for us to be thinking about moving forward? There's a lot of pieces to that and, and, um, you know, for a long-range plan, and we could be thinking about that in the meantime, um, if that's something of interest, but it seems like kind of two different paths. So are there any other questions we needed to, um, the recommendation we have for this coming year? That we can ask to approve? Okay. Um, then I will move that we adopt Green Bush as our virtual program uh for twenty-one, twenty-two, um, and then look at some long-range strategies moving forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Phil has seconded, all those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, all right. Uh, next, food and nutrition update, and with us tonight is Nicole Burnett, Food Services Director. Thanks for being here, Nicole.
All have the same problem Jenna did with the high school. Let me know if you can't understand or be, or here we go, this is all there. Just a few minutes, um, I kind of wrote up something and I'll send that out to you guys tomorrow that has more detail, so I just got to review a few things that are kind of happening right now, um, and then a little bit where we're headed. Um, actually, the last discussion, I wonder if we can feed these kids, I don't know. We'll see that, um, coming. Uh, there's kind of a few kind of unanswered questions right now on this year anyway with our program. Um, we're waiting for June thirtieth, after that, kind of thing, so, um, right now, we are free meals for any, any youth ages one through eighteen. Um, that's considered a summer food program, that's the funding, um, from the USDA is under that program, so we have all those guidelines and that funding reimbursement. So we've been doing this since March, it changed, they just keep pushing that further out, so we'll see what happens this summer. Um, the summer food committee has already started talking about meetings, we can make some decisions, some ideas. If we have to split our summer program, um, you know, June is one way and July is another, what's that going to look at? It looks like, you know, those types of things, so we're kind of starting to do some of that planning already, I think. Right now, based on what the state is telling us, they have absolutely no idea, um, what the state is going to do as far as the future goes. They've been asking to extend it, was something like till our new school year starts, or something along those lines, instead of putting a hard date on it, maybe just your school year has started, maybe we can develop or offer the summer food for free. Um, there's also some things going on, um, in a lot of states as well as the federal level two, about having free meals for all students again, um, for the entire school year next year. So we'll see what happens with all this, um, changes, but right now, we offer our students the options, so that they're the seventh through twelve graders that are in school one day and out the next day, um, they may get their meals curbside, we have it all, it says, and most of them, I think the parents are doing the ordering for them and doing most of the picking up, they can pick out weekly or a day basis. Um, for those, they also have the option to have a weekend at home. Um, we were the first district to make it to offer a weekend meals, and for several, several weeks following, no one else, um, even knew, or even figured out if that was a possibility, we continued that through the school years, that's allowed us to have a little bit more income, more reimbursement. We don't have large numbers, but I think it is helping some of our families to be able to make ends meet, to have those extra meals. I know my parent, twelve months per December for the weekend. Um, we put in another probably thirty that went out on Tuesday as part of the weekend process. So we're not having huge numbers, but very little more effort and, and just a little more input and we get a little more reimbursement of those meals. We also started that, then offered bread bundles, you might have seen some of that promotion right out, um, being eight months, so we did a pizza night, when we did our parentage conferences in November, Thanksgiving had a, we talked about, we did a twelve days, twelve months of Christmas, um, kind of a cover, um, the winter break, and then we'll be doing a main course, um, one, we're going to get those out of Walmart to learn, just thinking that there may be some students in my feet and an owl a day early if they're not actually in school. So also make it a little easier on parents, who might, even if they are here, they might have a cool lot, so, um, a lot of that, that's always stacked. And volunteers who we rely on, and also, so we'll be giving out night meals there. Um, we're thinking right now, we probably will have to offer another bundle to get us from the, the school to the start of summer food also. I'm not quite sure if we can turn that around again, so, um, that's probably the possibility. Those are all reinforced meals, we have our, you know, parents or students to let us survey, so we know if that, how many meals, um, that are going to be picked up. We also give a little more information, what you like, what's going on with this, how does summer food, kind of, what did you like about that? Uh, this next one we'll talk about next year's to, which students do, are missing, are there just things we used to have, you haven't seen for a while, here's some things, maybe you're thinking we don't need anymore, you're tired of having gradual or recent, so, um, let us know, so we're kind of getting some survey data back, um, from that as well. Um, so it does help, uh, it does, we can have it out as bundles kind of are already rushed. Uh, probably our biggest challenge or most likely biggest challenge for this year is a new one for our department. We were lucky up to this year to not have any staffing issues. Um, our surrounding districts have struggled, um, through services, general, to a little place, um, struggled a little bit with this, but really, historically, we have not had challenges. We had an opening, we could usually find someone apparently real quickly, Heather, you opened it, sorry. All right, but unfortunately, um, on top of COVID, um, and those related issues of staying, parents staying, or grandparents staying, and watching kids smaller and still got type thing, we've also had a couple of ways to build a little medical issues, and they are out, and those ones on the back, so those types, we have several staff who were all over retirement and that, just sort of right over the edge. We still have used staff that have been in the most, could also, um, be choosing, they're, I think, two staff members released, but they're already, you know, eligible to have it for like four years, so who knows how long it will have, so. How are we going to start to plan, what might be some alternative ways that we start doing some things? We can a little bit outside of office, we already started doing stacking in the afternoon. We have two high school students who started with us this summer, and they work in the afternoons to do prep. That seems to be working really well for us, we don't have to have them there in the morning, uh, they think they're awesome, they come in after school. So that's helping, uh, solve some of our issues, still needing, public has kind of changed the way we serve. Uh, we've done a lot, a lot of self-serve, the advantage of self-serve is the students take what they will actually eat instead of us, and we still ask them, but there's a big difference between how much time I do on and how much time they do on their own. Uh, and we can see that in our candidates, every student, and sometimes we'll tell you our ways this year is way up. So we definitely want to go back to our self-serve for the after, but second, that I don't have to choose that first, but I have the after serving, uh, that will allow a little ease on the pressure of having such stuff, and as well as we can do different things to, um, do pressure people's back, things like that. Um, the other thing I would say is cost is a little lower this year, and hopefully some of you have a very versatile level than what our normal, um, school level brands do. Um, so that's helping a little bit with some of those costs there. We are using disposable utensils, containers, one, because some more students can't make it from this room all the way to gym without having something covered, um, we do that, um, going in, as well as keeping it nice and safe, um, as well. Um, that has helped. That has helped with them and then they don't have to come back to us to determine their return in. So you don't have all that congestion and that traffic, which probably would have happened if it came back in. So we're sticking with that group, our schedule feature that is our policy that we want always. Just want you to be aware that that is just one of the challenges that we're dealing with in this pandemic. So. Just as I remember, we were awarded a grant from the Hope Foods Foundation to start our, um, one of the junior high teachers here. They actually just got a lot of work and they were arrested. However, we were supposed to begin that about the time we went through all of these spending changes we've gone through. And not able to implement it last spring, so we're getting started this year on that. So we have to do a lot of doing this, you must hope. Probably we can get some things growing, get some kids interested in continuing that next year. Something we need to be thinking about. Um, I think, I think one of the things is, I think I saw the year old hair that we got. We received the award from Douglas County Extinction Council. So I just thought, she dropped off the prize for this, I thought I brought it so you could see that. And I don't know where the, this idea is about, maybe something that would further the entire, um, thought I was confused that they had. And it's got a nice little plaque that explains the whole word.
Just, just so the people at home can see as well.
I tried a mini Hoover. It's nice and light. So then I decided to see questions, um, any concerns, any, okay. Sometimes I don't care, you know?
Yeah, Nikki, I just want to thank you for your efforts, uh, in treating the school. And, and I know that there's probably not an answer to this question because we're dealing with government issues. If we have any idea, we're going to know about summer, summer food planning, I mean, that is the, the, uh, the great thing.
Exactly. Unfortunately, historically, they seem to pay no attention to how long it takes to implement and make changes like this. So everything from guidelines that affect how manufacturers make food, um, they don't give it any more time for that kind of adjustment. We saw this fall, they, they announced on September, for October, no, August 31st, that we would extend through the end of September. And then about a week before that was over, then they extended it to Sept-, uh, to December, from September 30th to December 31st. And then we kind of got word that it was, they were using the term at that time, end of the school year. Eventually they did clarify that that would be June 30th. But if they're announcing it today, we had schools in session learning that they could have a meal program. So yeah, it could be a kind of fact, we could have started our summer program over there. And part of that is also, in our area, we are out of school in at least late May, early June. Some areas in the US aren't out until the end of June. So they don't necessarily think in our same time of time frame either, so maybe we're not that.
Yeah, because that program comes down from the USDA.
It does, it's, yes, both, um, the national school lunch and national school breakfast and summer food are all around it. All those guidelines are all listed.
Well, I know the first summer, I'm like, well, I'll make it a little bit spotty, but last year it looked like it was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so we don't know, and our challenge, for those of you who aren't prepared, is we have waivers this year because of the end of time. Lunch between this time, students have to stay on site to consume those meals. So that makes a huge difference. That's why we resolved such large numbers last year was they can pick up four or five meals. Were the food much easier for some of the parents to be able to pick up that many meals twice a week instead of bringing their kid every day? The year before was successful, I think, because we had some activities to go along. And so they were doing other things, but there is a challenge we already see nationwide, drop off from June disposition to July disposition, some eating. I, that's going to be a hard transition if, oh, I can make it to the time we had a week's worth of food and now I have to bring them every day. And they have to sit here and eat. We did try and encourage the first year that the parents, bring your own food, sit down and have a meal with your students. Didn't get much out of that. I've seen it a little bit in other districts, but not, not a lot of some of that they do. So it's kind of a, a challenge, it's going to be a challenge. We're just going to have to think really creatively on how we want to do this. My thought is maybe, I invited food pantry, food pantry coordinators to the meeting and able thinking, maybe there's something we can do more towards the grocery vouchers and the meals. Maybe we can work with them and be able to provide recipes and creative ways to make their meals. In July, we can't be feeding them in that way. We can still offer meals, um, on a daily basis at our community sites, but they won't be able to attend it. It's never going to happen. Yeah, just going to have to, you have ideas? Send us to me or come on, we'll be on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. And thank you to your entire staff. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I need to call a agreement. Can I call a five-minute recess? It's eight thirty. Uh, so just, and then we'll, when we circle back, we'll go into full business, which shouldn't take too long. And then, um, new business for grand agreement. Thanks.
And then she did it, I don't know what her best.
Leading back to order. Um, quick business is where we are. Uh, COVID-19 considerations. Anything you want to touch base on, Mr. Wilson?
Sure, just a couple of things. Most certainly, we said when the board made the decision on how we could work the segments faster, we always said we kind of try to evaluate and check that still work out. Um, I do think, uh, as you probably have seen in the news and so much, there is a bit of a push to get schools back even full time. Most certainly, we have to remember what we have been doing is not what other districts, they're talking about across the country, that have not been in school at all. Such as Chicago, very large district, they have not been in school at all, other than some online stuff. So they have wanted an interface to place. So, um, the question is, and most certainly there, the governor wants rules open. Uh, again, there is rules in the state of Kansas that have not been opened at all. Uh, and I believe our legislature is working on a bill right now that would say that every, every school district has to offer a face-to-face option. At some point, yeah. Question is whether the requirements, whether that bill passes or not, uh, and then what the requirements of that will be. I would say right now, we're still meeting that. But I do think as we go along here, um, and I'll talk about, well, I guess it'd be better if I just talk about vaccinations now. We're about halfway through our staff. We have about eighty-five vaccinated with the first dose. We have eighty-five more to go. Uh, we were told today that they believe they're going to get some additional doses. So we might be able to speed it up a little bit in whatever process if we need it. Uh, so if we can get those done quicker, that, which we've always said, we can consider, you know, where we're at after we get everybody vaccinated. Uh, I believe we can be pretty much done with vaccinations by about three, four, or a week after three, right? I think we're pretty much having most everybody done, uh, with at least the first dose. Uh, and then they'll finish up. Starting next week, they'll start doing a second dose for our employees that got the first dose. So they're going to do those on Fridays. Uh, that was good, I'm glad they can work that out because if people are, it's, it's been a lot tougher on people for that second dose. So that gives them the weekend recovery and they will necessarily have to just work for it. So, uh, I do think that's coming. Uh, the county for the last few weeks has been agreeing, that's good. Uh, it doesn't change a lot for us, but it does let us know that obviously the testing is down, the cases are down, uh, all good things right now. Uh, I, I don't know how variants are going to affect this whole thing. Uh, some of them are very concerned about that. Some, I, some of them feel like if we can get people vaccinated, the variants may not be as much of an effect, depending on the variant. Uh, so we'll see how that goes. But I do think in the next, next couple of months that we have worked with, we need to have discussions here on whether or not we're going to consider making any changes. I worry about that because the whole reason we went with this was the consistency basis that we have been able to stay in school, uh, this whole time and not have to close down. But I always want to keep an open mind here, considering whether or not we should, uh, consider at a point where the AB schedule continues. Uh, most certainly, I, I believe we're in mass for the rest of the year, we're heading for the rest of the year. We're, we're doing all those things for the remainder of the year. But our format might change until we get into school. It's something to consider right now. Um, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. Um, again, that might be in on the county, uh, whether they will relax on some of the rules that they have. Uh, we'll see how that goes. Anyway, um, just some considerations for coming back to even. I believe we should discuss again next month again, uh, and see where those discussions go. Whether people feel like we change or stick it the way we're at. Any comments or any questions to add for each of us?
There you go. Uh, so my, I think the one thing out of all of this, I'm proud of us as a board of, have, has accomplished is that consistency. You know, my, my fear, when I, when I think what it's hard for people is when things change, right? If you, if you can know what the future is bringing and you can set a plan and maintain that plan, I think even if it's difficult, it's easy, it's better than if things are changing. So my fear would be that we'd say, okay, let's open. So my fear would be that we say, okay, let's open up, which is what I think we should be doing. No question. I would, I would much rather have everybody here than doing the A B schedule. My fear is that we fall into that trap of, okay, let's go to full time and then something happened and now we're back to halftime. Everybody's having to jump around. You know, I mean, here we are, I mean, it's what, are we even halfway, close to half, halfway through the third quarter, right? I mean, I don't really know.
We're, we're at that.
Yeah, so just about there. So there's really not much left of the school here. You know, I, I, I kind of would fall on the side of just say, let's, let's finish out, you know, finish the course that we're on, not worry about it, you know, hopefully, you know, they relax and we can say goodbye to masks and all that kind of stuff midsummer or whatever. Um, you know, I, and I, I'm totally for going back to being full time in school and getting rid of the A B schedule if I felt like that we had really good assurance that this is going to be what they do for the rest of the year. What I don't want to do is do the, what people are, what some districts around us have done, which is like, okay, now we're in, now nobody's in, now we're halftime, and now we're full time, and now nobody's back in. And if, if it's worked really well for us, I feel like so far to be in a situation where we can at least have that one little rock that's unchanging for everybody else and everything else is changing. For, for me at least, I think I'm probably on the, on the other side of just keeping it as is, even though I'd rather see it be oh, in a, in a full time.
Any other comments, Harry?
My, um, consistency is, is I agree with that, but also that even though we're all parents that things could be changed and a lot of parents wanted it to change, I still feel like the parents needed to think that it would be in this safety room. You know, you know, maybe there's a difference in that way. And I feel like we should keep that consistency because of that, because of the way that those, those are. But, and if we're to decide, unfortunately, come out, then we're looking at March and, you know, people may, so. So, uh, we're going to say within, within the fall, which hopefully, uh, should, it's very, uh, much better.
So I, I don't. Um, the other thing to think about too is that, um, I will say, I have received a lot of emails. Um, we're agreeing, so let's, let's go back and I, and I understand that. Um, but at the same time, you have to think through, okay, how does everybody eat? Those are the things, you know, we're agreeing, we can go back and, and right now, I believe we only have one active case district ride. I think there's only one. So we're doing a good job. Um, and I would hate for us, particularly when I think about the elementary levels, um, when you think about classroom dynamic and how that even changed its semester. If you make a large scale change that lasts nine weeks, it's basically like starting a brand new classroom again. And, you know, as much as we all want the kids to be back, um, we have to think about, keep those logistical things in mind too, in terms of consistency. Um, so continue to think about that, Mr. Dorby. Thank you for, um, touching base on that because I think it's just important that the community knows we're not just letting it sit there. Um, that we are in a constant state of reevaluation and ultimately our goal is to have the kids back. Um, but what's the smartest way to get from point A to point B? Um, that, that keeps all those logistical considerations in mind. So does anyone else have anything on this particular topic? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to the Equity Committee's statement. Tony, if you want to talk to us about that?
Sure, thank you. It is, it, uh, it is my honor that on behalf of United States of America, I'm going to call really loud. It's on, it looks like.
Here.
Sure, that'd be good. Now, just a second. Okay, how about this? Yes? All right. Uh, it's my honor, I mean, I'm saying we need a losing committee to, uh, to present, uh, the statement that we have developed as a committee uh, that affirms the, um, the intent of now, of the board, also the entire studio, which I hope be inclusive of all the, all of those, uh, any kind of individual, I mean, actor, I mean, you know, people. So, uh, do I need to put it over the level? Okay. Uh, I think the, uh, the fact that you do this is very important. It's, uh, it's made by the president, and I think we should celebrate. Then, to celebrate, uh, uh, my children, my children in the United States. So I think this is a, a free, I don't think this is. Uh, uh, remember, uh, this, uh, national, uh, you don't have a lot of time. This, uh, statement was issued for all the, uh, uh, board members to review. And as far as I know, there was, uh, uh, there were, uh, suggestions for an amendment, some of those directions. And so, uh, I present the, uh, statement as presented for all of you. Uh, as a, as a, as a, I would have to suggest that the EOP has, uh, uh, more policy, uh, uh, to see.
Uh, thank you, Tony, and everyone who's on the committee. Uh, does anyone have any questions? That was sent out, what day was? I think it was December, late December. Um, we had, uh, for everyone's review, um, after the committee has, has met. This was a process that, um, was begun a few months ago, um, in, in developing that. So, anybody have questions? If not, we will entertain a motion to accept the Equity Committee's statement as presented.
Just a little bit of a follow-up. So we're in and out of this policy, we've turned up the volume, you know, something that, um, you're, it's, you're interested in the website or just?
Yeah, I think that, uh, that statement, that you need to go out on the west side.
This is already, you, 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 you got it.
Sorry, I forgot that. Thank you. Uh, the, uh, I think that we can put it on our Facebook page, we can put it on our website, we can put it out there in several places, so it's not there with this statement from the school board.
I just want to, you know, to look for, pardon my ignorance, people that I give a big credit for.
Yeah, is it worth their reading it? I mean.
I mean, I have that in front of me, unfortunately.
I actually advise we could work to, I mean, if it's, if it's out, it is like, the.
One other thing that we want to make in this statement is the reason why we go out here, we're bringing the work, we're trying to address issues, uh, especially with, uh, the racial, ethnic, uh, sort of inclusion, uh, not at all. And so, we are trying to accept that, uh, our, our efforts to sort of identify any kind of distributive role processes, the, uh, burn, and also, and also, for workforce, or, uh, in the food, uh, uh, students, uh, students, staff, all, all people, so that they're going to have. Uh, and so, that is, that is something we are trying to be very intentional about. However, we, and the founder of the committee, that because there are a lot of balls of mirror right now, that, uh, moving is an issue before, is, uh, proving more challenging than ever was. And so, that's, that's probably one of the reasons we didn't make the statement, because that we, you're taking this seriously, but we are exceptional candidates, and we are not, we're not, whatever it is, uh, the order of what we've done, we're just trying to be another thing in, uh, uh, in the world that, uh, that, uh, perhaps right now, being cool, so that we can be, um, a, a, a higher priority. Uh, but we are not trying to dismiss these, you know, the products of the statement. The statement itself says, is it worth discussing, uh, you're providing, is it? If you're the state, or if you set up on that issue, uh, it assumes no problem of the approach to our current addresses across the spectrum of the business.
Any else? Susan, you have a poll up?
I think I do, I want to make sure I have the most final draft, but I'd be happy to read it if you want to.
Yeah, do you mind?
Susan, this part, I think, I think it was the last thing, and I added to it, it has that, I think it's good. Or equity, I'm sorry, equity instead of, uh, the board.
Okay. Okay. It says, racism and discrimination are not new problems in America or in our schools. For decades, USC three forty eight has had policies in place that are aimed at inclusivity, diversity, and acceptance. Over the past year, it has again been clear that the struggle in our country is far from over. The Voluntiary School Board decided that it was time to revisit our own efforts. During the summer, the board voted to form a committee comprised of board members and district administrators to confront these issues and to study ways to bring our commitment to equal opportunity and treatment for all closer to reality. While that process is still in progress, the board believes that a progress report is appropriate. The Diversity and Inclusion Committee began its work by discussing a broad range of topics connected to maintaining a culture of equity in our district. In recent months, the committee has focused on a handful of concrete issues included. Equity encounters this scenario, practices are applied, a long-term review of curriculum and texts, the creation of an elective board that examines the history of racism in America, ensuring that all of our students and patrons feel comfortable sharing their concerns about these issues. The USC three forty eight school board acknowledges that the struggle to end racism is an ongoing effort and one that requires constant vigilance. We are committed to addressing these issues, to ensuring that every student who attends our schools is treated fairly and equally, regardless of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, age, disability, or genetic information. The Diversity and Inclusion Committee will continue its work. We value the input of all district patrons. If you want to share your own perspective or ideas, please contact Superintended Alder or Committee Chair coming through.
Thank you, Susan. All right, any other questions? No need.
Well, one thing that I think is, um, because they're in summer, then they're going to put it, and, uh, the, uh, on, I think, during summer, it's kind of a, like you was.
We just said during the summer of twenty twenty, that, that issue.
Well, I would, I would say that.
That'd be great.
Maybe the whole, uh, twenty twenty.
A motion for approval for the statement.
On the other one, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the statement that we're, from, uh, the Equity, uh, 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 the, uh, the board, uh.
Second.
All right, Tony has moved and Susan has seconded, that we accept the statement of with adding twenty twenty to the phrasing of summer, so that it's identified. Um, all those in favor of approving the statement as presented, please say aye. Is there any?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thanks again to the committee for your work on that. Um, we really appreciate it. All right, moving on to new business. We have transportation, but I don't, or do we need to strike that? Don't see.
Well, essentially, all I need to say is that we, we talked about, you know, possibility of the service.
Right.
Rests is very strongly that they can go into next year, they can make it through next year without having considered that. So at this point, our recommendation is just to continue with what we are with our system, and, uh, we'll reconsider, uh, again, we'll reevaluate next year on whether we might want to switch to a service.
Um, and now we are going to talk about, this was our item that we amended, added to the agenda, and that is our agreement with the GRAC. Um, thank you for being patient. Um, so, the, um, you guys all got the emails, uh, the BZRC agreement, um, I don't know if there's an attachment there that gave, uh, information about the current agreement, the proposed new agreement, and then also rental history. That's quite a lot of discussion. Mr. Borkey, anything you would like to add?
Well, I think, uh, we, we've been working under that agreement quite a while. Uh, the original agreement, uh, was two thousand eleven, actually, the very first agreement was two thousand eight. And then we made some adjustments to that, two thousand eleven, and that has set place since. Uh, because of COVID things and so on, uh, Matt, the floor, and the, and the recreation this past year felt like, you know, we've lost a lot of income and so on, so we really need to push our rentals. So, that's the part that, that they are proposing a change to this split on the rental fees. Um, because they put a lot of work into getting more of those this year, and we want to continue this order of programs. Um, so, and, and certainly last year, for you guys to ask questions of, or if he wasn't saying anything, but it basically is, that has been fifty to fifty, okay? But prior to this year, those amounts were, overall, were quite a bit smaller, and there was a reason why they did that. Um, they decided to have a lot more rentals because they were trying to cover costs for them, then realized that, oh yeah, we've got this fifty to fifty. So, Matt, I, I don't know if you want to come up and make, make a better case of the board, and then the board should consider what you feel is a fair trade-off on that, whether that's to stick with fifty to fifty, or consider a change, as I think Matt is proposing.
Yeah, what you see before you, um, is the top of the agreement, and then the new agreement that I have here is a man is on. And so, what we, not only, part of everything, uh, covers rental fees and things like that, and it also covers, um, some maintenance items, um, but our areas, which is, through the years, has, uh, maintained, uh, school ground, primarily the outdoor lane areas, so, uh, the drivers are being, so, um, we covered that, our, our, and, and, um, at the end of the year, um, we'll leave out things such as the fertilizer and seed and things like that, and so, that was specifically, also, a fifty to eighty more, and, and things like that. And then, and that has totally fine, um, and then, um, but what we're, kind of, what we're, is, is to call, I mentioned, um, when, when COVID hit us this year, we were concentrating to, to try to handle it because of revenue loss. And so, uh, we really invested our rentals this year, uh, to cover some of those, the loss, and, uh, you can see, we, we generated, uh, a little over $20,000 in rental fees, that's what we're talking about this year, uh, that's what the board measures, uh, average measures, uh, seventeen and change, I don't think. And, uh, after that, um, you know, I found out that there was, like, a split in that, um, and so I was like, well, maybe we can, our conversation, and look at, and word now, is, what I'm proposing is eighty twenty. And if you look at the past year rentals, and, and, should be the interpretation, aren't you, I think we generated, maybe, just under $3,000 two years ago, and not quite $8,000 uh, last year. So at fifty to fifty, you know, you're, you're not a viable one. Um, but as long as I'm here, I would like to see us, um, you know, remain strong in our, in the rentals as positive, as a positive hand. And therefore, if, if we're splitting, if we're splitting eighty twenty on, on, you know, twenty one, twenty two, twenty five thousand a year, a little bit of, uh, better option is to solicit, uh, but at the same time, too, you know, I would get that at the record, is, is, is what I'm recruiting in, in the van, uh, to, to make those events. Uh, so, if you're willing to, to potentially do an eighty twenty split on, um, those dollars here, to see the free, uh, we had last year, and then moving forward, um, I would really consider, uh, your, your, your decision to that.
Um, I would like to say I'm completely comfortable with that, because twenty percent of seventeen is thirty four hundred dollars, which is more than fifty percent of two thousand bucks. Uh, so I, I don't want to disincentivize the hustle that's going on at the RAC of, of, um, tapping into the, the club tournament environment where there is revenue. Um, in terms of how long it had been since we revisited this, um, I apologize for that. It, two thousand eleven was too long of a time for that to, to go without revisiting it, and, uh, Carrie and I met with Mr. Borkey and Matt, just so the board knows, um, since we were designated volunteers, we talked about that in the last meeting. Uh, we met via Zoom on Friday and talked about this, and we certainly didn't want to answer for the board on that, but it is important, i- if the board needs more time to make a decision about the agreement moving forward, uh, that is one thing, but we did go ahead and, uh, agreed to do, put this on the agenda tonight, because they still need to close the books, uh, for this past year. And so, having an answer about, um, are we comfortable with the eighty twenty moving forward for the new agreement, are we also comfortable with that being applied retroactively to twenty twenty? Um, I am, but that was not something that we felt comfortable answering for the board on, so that's kind of the two-part decision that we need to make here. Um, the, the other piece is that we talked about in the meeting, and Carrie, if I'm forgetting anything, jump in. Um, but since two thousand eleven, I mean, that's seven years, and we don't want, oh, excuse me. My great, yeah, I'm not the one to figure the, the percentage calculation. Um, it's too long to, to not, uh, at least revisit the agreement, even if the agreement's working for us, and so, um, that's certainly, um, I, I feel badly about that, so I'm glad this came up, because it gives us an opportunity, and one thing we talked about was saying, you know, let's reevaluate this agreement every three years, because it catches, uh, the rotation, that someone from this board and someone from his board will be on, um, to look at that. Of course, we can always revisit it, um, if something changes, it doesn't mean we have to wait three years, but at least that gives it in a rotation that we, we're on the schedule that way, um, to make sure that that relationship is still, um, viable and healthy and collaborative, which is what we want. Um, so, I'm, I'm glad this sort of came up, but now those are the two questions we have to ask or answer tonight. Um, eighty twenty moving forward, and are we okay with doing that retroactively for this last year? So, I'm gonna, Carrie, did I mention, forget anything? I feel like I'm forgetting some.
No, it's hundred and a half. And it's high. Yeah, it's kind of, the one thing that, um, that was also mentioned, I think, is about the sponsorship, and I noticed in here that we didn't talk about was, um, the sponsor, because I know we talked about the sponsorship when we go to the RAC, but I noticed in here that, is, this is what we designated to go for sponsorship.
Yeah, you bet. For the, the, uh, we did in the past, where our sponsorship, uh, for, we'll take a lot of the dollars, and we'll just move it across the, 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 and this will, will take us a lot of, we'll get that sponsorship as well, so we'll use that for other purposes.
And that board word has signed off on this, correct?
Yes, we, we just got the last one.
Great. So just so our board knows, they're, they're okay with this as presented, and so now, you want to take a few minutes and, and review, and, um, if there are more questions from that, or more discussion, we'll give it a few minutes.
Yeah, and once you determine you're, you're aligned with this, um, I've mentioned all, what I, you know, the little, the bottom, and, 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 and
So, do we need a motion then?
Well, we would need a motion if everyone is comfortable doing that, um, unless anyone else has any questions or points of discussion on our foundation, but yes, we would want a motion.
My microphone.
Uh, I would, we have, we have, the, 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 presented retroactively. Quick.
All right, Andy has moved and Tony has seconded. Yes, discussion, yes.
What is the addition of the clause to review?
Yes, gotcha. Um, okay, so Annie has moved, Tony has seconded, that we approve the RAC agreement as presented with the addition of a clause that we have a process for review every three years, but may review, um, sooner if, if the need arises, and we did talk about that, so, okay. Megan, I'll help with voting. All those in, with the attorney, yes. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Borkey. All right, um, moving on to board member input. Who on the court? Chris and Susan, and or Susan, or both, they're doing the, the statement.
I'll, I'll, I can remember this, and you have to climb in, because I always defer to you, and I feel like I'm not pulling my weight off. I, I think I can remember three main points. One, Mr. Christopher Perry was elected president, that's a pretty important thing. And, uh, regarding the assessment conversation, I, I just wanted to touch on that, Dan is always , um, offering you come and give any presentation to the board to help us all understand that a little bit better, and if we need to do any more detail, then I'll let Chris do that on the assessment talk. Um, and then, I guess, just a reminder that, uh, they kind of wait to seal any negotiating deals until all three districts have, um, kind of made their decisions or were close to, uh, because they do give an average for, and raises of the three districts. And that's really all I can think of.
That's very good. Thank you. I, 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 I'm, 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 I'm starting on this, so, we, uh, actually, I think, uh, uh, I guess with the, the SRS, uh, funding coming in for education, uh, services, that that money does not go directly to the educational cooperative, and so, like, when we're giving to those additional lessons, we, it's, it's, it's not that, for, the, 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 so, they, they, there is a conversation at the state level, the state board is, is, in theory, is supposed to approve, so, it might just go directly to the educational cooperative in locals, uh, I'm not sure if we've done that yet or not, uh, but that's, okay, yeah, there's this question about, so, um, so, just want to keep that on our agenda, too, that, that we're having conversations about, uh, how does that, how do we go forward to, uh, that, that, quote, it's going to need some additional boost to that, we got, the county last year, it was, the state, and, and some fully, as well, this, this is keep that on our agenda for, for, you know, you know, budgetary consideration, that, that they're including that as well, and, and, and then actually get a, a, a chunk of that SRS, obviously. Um, oh, what else do we need to do? Uh, we are now only down fifteen percent of the, we put it down, uh, up to twenty five or thirty percent at one point, but we're slowly, um, hiring, and really great folks to step in to our process, and, 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 so, slowly, slowly, and, 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 so, um, do you have, Susan, anything?
Uh, thank you, Susan, of course. Uh, congratulations on being elected president. Um,
She feels her bad.
Congratulations slash my condolences. Um, miscellaneous, does any board member have anything they would like to read for? I have a couple of dates, um, just so you guys know, District Site Council will be meeting, um, before we have our next board meeting, uh, so we will touch base, uh, with you on that at our, at our next board meeting, but that is going to be happening. Um, the other thing is that, uh, I'm gonna kind of drop this now for future meeting, but, um, I was going back and reviewing my notes from a year ago, uh, we have a, a document that is our strategic plan, and, um, that was one of the things before, um, everything hit in March, that I had planned on, um, bringing back in front of everyone, because at this point, I think I'm the only one remaining that was involved with developing that strategic plan. And so, I'm not saying that this is necessarily the time to, um, create a new strategic plan, but because six of the seven people up here had no say in creating it, I, I do want to get it in front of you, um, and make sure, maybe that's an item that's in your folders for next month, it's on the website, too, but, um, you know, it's not a meaningless exercise, it requires focus groups and, you know, survey data research from stakeholders, et cetera, to formulate that, so, it is a large undertaking if it's done correctly, and why do it if we're not going to do it correctly? I'm not at all saying that this is the time or the, the space for use for that kind of project, but I also wanted to make sure that you know about it, um, and have a chance to review it, and it may be that, hey, we're okay with it, how it is for now, and we're okay with doing that later, but I don't want to assume that, um, just because of my virtue of the fact of the changeover that we have. So, I, I did want to kind of just bring that up and get that in front of you for tonight, um, because in theory, you know, everything we do should be guided by our strategic plan, policy, precedent, procedure, and if, when we have those things, it takes a lot of the, um, when, when we function in that way, it, it eliminates a lot of the guesswork, so I did want to just put that in front of you. Um, anybody else have anything for this length? Okay.
I was definitely, kind of, affirm that, that statement about the strategic plan, maybe the, the sense of the things that we do as an organization, and while the current strategic plan is excellent, uh, even just considering the fact that we've got six new board members who are in play with that, uh, the whole thing with COVID that has happened because of this, there's a lot of things that can shift, um, what our priorities are based on the last, you know, five, six years since that initiated, and, 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 and the notion I have in relation to that is, uh, I know, um, it's nice to be able to connect our strategic plan to our key goals as well, and I'm kind of curious if you serve a reminder for me, are we in year three of, he's having a weird pause, uh, or two?
We're, we're in, which you consider year four, next year will be our final year of this.
And so, that might be a neurological time, you know, to perhaps, to finish one cycle and then rebound, but I do want you guys to just be aware of it, so you can be thinking about it, so that whatever we do with it, we're intentional about it, um, so, okay, great. Uh, superintendent's report, I know you touched on this already, but I didn't want to skip over you, Mr. Borkey, or something.
And I probably say the same, it was over, and, and, so I, I won't, uh, so I wanted it to kind of, so, I'm good.
Uh, do we have any more executive session? Not that I'm aware of, okay. So the only thing we have left to do is we have a personnel report that we would need to approve, and I think that's our last item of business before turning. Tony has moved and fills a second lead that we approved the personnel report as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. And all we have left to do is adjourn. You don't want to? Okay, Carrie has moved, and Tony has seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right. Uh, meeting adjourned nine eighteen.